There you go. Hey, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I see your bananas, buddy.
Yeah. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, Mark.
I know I'm quiet in the beginning, but it's it's I always feel challenged being the tech guy for the commission right now.
I see Kaho Steve here. Hey, Steve. I'm glad we have a collar in the house. Makes me comfortable.
Ted has not come on yet?
No, he has not. Let me give him a text real quick.
If you hear my printer, it's my grandkids are preparing for Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and they are very excited to learn about him. St. Louis does a good job.
Okay, Will. You bear with me. I'm just gonna try and make contact. Hold on.
How you doing, Steve? Good to see you. Eating breakfast?
I just made some dry ai, so I'm just sampling my product.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience at this time. I believe Ted is just joining us. All the commissioners are present here for this. Me, our first meeting of 2022. I hope you all had a great end to 2021, even though it rained most of the holidays. I think it was a good sign of cleansing away 21 and looking better for brighter 22. Yeah, so with that being said, I just want to call this meeting to order. Before we begin on the agenda. There will be a short period of time around 9:50, about 10:15, and I may have to run to another meeting. And when I in my absence, Martha will lead the discussion at that time, wherever that may be. So I'll make that announcement. The Zoom will still continue to run and be recorded. Also, to the commissioners, before we begin on our public testimonies on the agenda items. I'm just wanted to make an addition and. I have been asked by the IA Neighborhood Board to make a presentation on the commission. This coming Monday, and so I just want to have a discussion with you folks on how you feel about that and get your approval or disapproval. If that's possible, I want to add that probably to the the end of the agenda as an item seven. Any comments?
What did you want to add at number seven, your discussion with the neighborhood board?
No, just the fact that they've invited me, and if you have any comments on that, or should I go, or should I not go? I just want to have make sure you guys under. Feel about me representing the commission at a neighborhood board meeting in IA.
Mark, what did they? The reason I'm asking this question, is it to discuss the OCCC development, or is it an overview of the commission's responsibility? Two different things.
Yes, there is, there is. I'm trying to see, I don't know how to articulate this. They have in their. The individual I'm talking with, they have only heard from the developer. About the jail, and they wanted to have someone who could answer questions, not just about the jail, but its impact on the system. And other questions that they have that no one could answer.
So again, the letter that we sent to the money committees?
Yes.
For the jail development, that should be your guide.
Okay, okay, are we doing? Do we further discuss this? I'm allowed to go or?
No, other people have to chime in, but I just say use that as your guide, because that's what we as a commission put out officially.
Mark, I'm good. I think I appeared twice. Information only long ago. Bob, when do we go? Couple of years ago, huh?
Yeah, we did.
And it wasn't, I really like them, the good people, they met well, some of the legislators came, but we need to. Need to be cautious, just so you know, and they got into the weeds on the Red Hill, shut down Red Hill thing, and I was frankly appalled. That the Navy came in there and unashamedly wanted to support keeping the as you would expect. So I think it's a good board and they're smart, but it doesn't represent the entire community. And so I support you going, Mark.
I won't make a comment here that I shared with Mark yesterday. I was digging into the weeds of all the attachments. That PSD has posted on the development, and one of the things I found is the city council passed a resolution. That the developers or the department must meet with the IA Neighborhood Board, and that's the only reason they have continued meeting with them. Because Carrie just sent a comment where Carrie Anne sent a comment where she said that at the last meeting. Bettina was there, and again, it was required by this resolution.
Well, Martha Bettina was at both meetings that Bob and I were at, right, Bob?
Absolutely. And she was there, and she spoke at both meetings.
And she's good, but she didn't represent the community, obviously.
Well, yeah, and she's not there to represent the community, but what I want to stress is that their continual attendance at the IA Neighborhood Board. Is required by resolution passed by the city council about a year and a half ago. So that is why they were in attendance all the time there. So I guess what I'm concerned about, they are not letting people. They're not meeting because they need to meet with them for state law reasons. They're meeting with them because the city council required them to meet with them.
Let's let's I'm gonna, we can move this to an item seven on the agenda. We can finish the conversation, but I do want to start the meeting. Okay, so we agree with moving into item seven, Mike, Martha, Ted, Ron.
I'm okay.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Thank you, everyone. As in, as written on the agenda, I'd like to begin public testimony on the items that we will be speaking about today. Please indicate. By raising your hands or digitally or visually visually, and I'll call upon you at this time. Please keep your. Your your comments to two or three minutes so that we can move on in the meeting. Thank you. I'll start with you, Kat.
Aloha, everybody, and Happy New Year. I'd like to speak on two issues. One is the the next legislative set session. I want you to know that there are two bills that are currently being drafted. One is to fix the error in Act 179. And that is going to be to be introduced by the chairs of House and Senate Public Safety. And the other bill is a family visitation and resource center. And that is also being reintroduced by the same people. The second issue is about Saguaro. A few meetings ago. A question was asked about Jennifer Beckler, who is the monitor for Saguaro. And Mr. Johnson replied that he had had sent me those reports. However, those reports have no information. They're just checklist. So you get no sense of how that facility is being run. And how our people are being treated. So I talked to several attorneys and. They they couldn't make heads or tails out of this. It's just.
Kat, you went, you were muted?
And of all the people I have spoken to at Saguaro who live there, no one has ever met her or spoken to her. They did not know who she was. So my question is, what the heck is she doing on our dime? Because nobody, if she's the monitor for Hawaii and nobody knows her, I think that's a problem. The second issue about solitary, I've been getting lots and lots of letters from people in solitary confinement. They're violating the Eighth Amendment. And one of the letters I got, a man was sentenced to solitary when he got into the hearing part. They had totally changed what the offense was, and. I don't know, came up with something new because what he was originally charged with. Other ACOs came forward and said, that's not true. So when he got to the hearing, the hearing officer just totally put something new in, and the guy isn't solitary. It just seems something is very wrong, and I hope we look into that. Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you, Mark. First, I'd like to. Say that I have to leave the this meeting at probably 9:50 or 10 o'clock along with Mark to be at the OHA meeting. So I'll be leaving and checking out, not because I'm not interested in what happens here, but because of what I have to be there, I think. I want to thank the commission for the very letter that they wrote to the legislators regarding the new OCCC. OCCC replacement. I really appreciate the letter. I appreciate your thoughts and comments, and I think it will help us. End up maybe getting a much better jail. So I think that was very important thing to do. It was well written. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to do that. I know the two bills will be, at least one bill will be introduced, probably Carrie Anne can talk more about that. Calling for a moratorium on planning for the new jail until we get a lot of issues straightened out. And just to let you know, I have drafted my own version of a bill to do the same thing. Also calling for two things, a moratorium on any any planning for a public part private partnership to. Build a new jail or plan or develop a new jail, and also calling on a the the. The law would also provide that the Oversight Commission would create a a committee to participate. As a full partner in all of the planning of the jail going forward. And and hopefully, there could be an appropriation of money even for that commission. So that they can participate meaningfully in the jail going forward if there is indeed a moratorium, and we begin to rethink what we're doing. I just want to make one brief comment. I've, you know, been faced with arguments that. Gee, we can't stop the planning for the new jail because the people who are in it are suffering so badly, and I would say that I agree that is. You know, that they're suffering, anybody is suffering who is in OCCC because of the conditions there. But it's not the fault of the public that that is happening. It's the fault of the Department of Public Safety going all the way back to. 2015 and 16 and 17, when they took the wrong turns on how to plan the jail. And and did not use best practices and did not engage the community in the process. That's the reason for the delay. Not because we want to cause suffering, but because they didn't do the job right. I would also like to say that the there was an article in Civil Beat by Kevin Dayton that I think is important for two reasons. Number one. The Governor Ege apparently agreed with my assessment, though he didn't have my name. That the new jail would probably cost on the order of $1 billion, not not $525 million. Which is exactly what I said in the paper. And so I think going forward, we all ought to bear in mind that this will be probably the most expensive jail in the history of the world. And it works out if they stick to the present plan, that it'll cost over 700, almost $800,000 per bed. To create this new jail. And to make matters worse, in that article that Kevin Dayton, that it was such an excellent article that Kevin Dayton published. The governor said, oh, yeah, this is costing us too much money, and therefore, maybe we ought to quote mimic. The planning of other jails. In other words, use off the shelf plans. Which means off the shelf plans is just a horrible way to proceed with a billion dollar project that's going to influence our correctional system for the next 30 or 40 years. It's the worst idea I can imagine, and we deserve a whole lot better than having some private corporation pull these things off the shelf and and. And say, this is going to be your new jail. So I think that is important. I have a lot of questions about how this new jail is going to work, and I would like to make just or suggested that you. At some point, maybe put it on the next agenda, that you have a maybe a half day or even a whole day. Open meeting on nothing but this new jail and start asking some really hard questions to the department and the planners. Including some of the consultants and and Dags about, for example, how much is this really going to cost? I mean, we already have, the department has already received comments from 22 different organizations, corporations. Talking about the feasibility of the jail and 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 all aspects of the planning of the jail. And can we get that information? We don't even know who who responded, who these 22 companies are, what did they say, and and what? Is the department relying on and making the decisions going forward? We need to have that information. If it's confidential, we need to know that. If it's available, we need to get it. And we need to ask hard questions like who's going to own the jail at the end of this lease period? What are the lease payments going to be? Are the negotiations going to be public with regard to what the you what the what the design of the new jail is? I could go on and on. But I think we need to ask hard questions and try and get some answers or find out. That a public partnership is really not the way to go because we can't get the right answers because it's all confidential information. And we should be shifting, which I think we should anyway, to funding this new jail, whatever it is, through the conventional. Procurement process, which has worked well for a lot of projects. So those are my comments. I've already gone over the time limit. I really appreciate all the work that you folks put in. Want to thank you once again for that wonderful letter supporting the paper. It's going to help, I think, add some credibility to it. And I look forward to working with all of you going forward to try and build a better jail for the city and county of Honolulu and the people here. Thank you.
Bob, appreciate your work as well. A lot of blank screens. Anybody else wanting to give testimony?
Good morning. This is Angie in Florida.
Hi, Angie.
Good morning. I just want to address my concern. You know, you all know my son is at Waiala. They are not following COVID protocols still. I don't know what came of the investigations to the facilities. They are currently. On a 10 day lockdown because of COVID in the facility. My concern with that is not just everyone's health, but the morale, I've noticed my son's morale has taken a drastic turn for the worse. They cannot use phones. They set up laptops so they have video visits and they can't use those. It affects, you know, their communication. It affects how they move around. I'm sure it's going to affect work furlough. It's going to affect parole. I don't know what is going on over there, but I'm very, very concerned. That they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and people are going to end up getting very sick, and I hope that. You know, someone's going in and looking at what's happening over there because they're not doing what they're supposed to do.
Thank you, Angie. Some of that will be discussed about today. So appreciate your comments at this time. Carrie Anne?
Good morning, Chair Patterson. This is Carrie Anne Shirota. I'm here as the Policy Director for the ACLU of Hawaii. And I would just like to maybe give a, it looks like on the agenda, you will be discussing legislative updates, but I think if I can share now at this time. So the legislative priorities for the ACLU this year, which were mentioned at the last meeting.
Carrie Anne, it's Martha. Can we wait until we get to the section on the legislature rather than present it now? Moral logical flow, okay?
Okay, but if I could just maybe at this point, just provide a little update on the IA Neighborhood Board meeting since I did attend for the discussion. Ms. Bettina Mahart did present. She was having technical difficulties, so she wasn't able to go through an entire presentation. In terms of the community, because they are, they did not allow for verbal questions, they just only wanted us to ask questions to pose them in the chat box. I listed a number of questions, particularly starting off with the cost of the jail. And they admitted that they do not know what the updated cost is. In the chat box, I also mentioned that the governor in the most recent article by Kevin Dayton noted that the cost could be closer to 1 million. And asked when they would have an updated estimate, and they said that potentially later this summer, they would have an updated cost to that. And in the chat box, there were other questions and concerns, just saying that the community should be aware of alternatives to incarceration. Looking at what other states have done in terms of building new jails and how that, in the case of Utah, within 21 days of opening this new facility, it was full. And it appears that they are very interested, and I've heard that there may be requests coming from either PSD slash Ms. Bettina. Asking the IA Neighborhood Board to endorse or support the building of the new jail. And so before, if that request is made, I respectfully request that the commission. Present and notify the community so that they can hear the other side of the story and that. Alternatives to incarceration are more cost effective and would enhance community safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate that comment. I'm not seeing any other, any visual hands or digital hands. We'll move forward.
Mark, could I ask one very brief question of Bob because he's got to leave? Bob. There's the California Prison Moratorium Project. A moratorium, in my mind, is different than a pause. This California Prison Moratorium Project, which is co-founded by Ruth Gilmore, basically says full stop. Until certain things happen. That shifts the burden, I guess, maybe because it is given. As a retired judge, I think of presumption. So in other words, it's not a pause. It's a full stop, and I want to, maybe somebody could put in the chat room, the California Prison Moratorium Project and Ruth Gilmore, because. She makes, now, I don't always agree with Dr. Gilmore, but she makes some good points. Have you had a chance to read that yet, Bob?
I'm sorry, Mike, I haven't.
Okay, well, maybe. Maybe we could put that in the chat, and I know Carrie Anne, you're aware of Dr. Ruth Gilmore, right?
Yes, and when we get to the legislative section, I'll talk about the proposed moratorium, which is much broader. And more along the lines of what you were suggesting, Judge Tom.
Then I will pause, Carrie Anne. I don't want to, anyway, I just want to get to Bob before he leaves. You're going to be around, Carrie Anne, I hope, yes?
Yes, I will stay on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item two on our agenda is the update on the hiring of the Oversight Coordinator. So I'm just going to make a report to to the commission that we're still waiting any decision from the Office of the Governor at this time. Lisa, I haven't been able to contact you. I'm not sure if you heard anything, but I haven't been contacted on any decision at this time.
I remember Lisa had to jump off for another meeting.
No, I did check. Nothing. I haven't heard anything.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Item number three. Good morning, Max. Are you able to make a report on our situation with the Omicron in the in the facilities at this time?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Max.
So quick update on the active cases within the facilities. We are currently, as of yesterday, we had 267 infections throughout the facilities. We had no infections at Waiala. We had no reported infections at Saguaro. Our biggest cluster of infections are in OCCC, 188. Followed by women's at 44. Let me give you the rest of the numbers. HCCC is at 14, KCCC at 5, MCCC at 2. Halawa at 14. Also concerned is the number of positives that we have within the Department for Staffing. So as of yesterday, we had 81 positives for staff. And again, the big numbers were 26 at OCCC, 11 at Halawa. Five at HCCC, KCCC eight. MCCC seven. Lonnie, we had seven. And at Waiala, we had 14. So even if the facilities don't have positive inmates, we will lock down certain housing units and possibly the whole facility, depending on staff being positive there. It's the community spread is evident, you know, even in administration, we're reporting six active positives. Sheriff's Division is reporting seven active positive cases amongst staff. So it's it's widespread. Positive. Department has initiated boosters, and we initiated a program to. An incentive. So it's a $25 incentive for inmates that, you know, accept the booster. And as of last month, we started the program. So far, we're counting 255 inmates that were boosted. This includes Saguaro. That's as far as vaccinations and infections, that's all I have to report.
Commission, is any question for Max on the COVID report?
Max, do you have information from Saguaro, or did I just miss it?
We don't, Saguaro is not reporting any active cases right now.
And so that includes their staff, not just inmates?
We don't have information on their staff because of the private, you know, they're private, they're private company.
But we contract with them. I mean, you know, we have a responsibility there. I'm sorry, we have a contract with them.
I'm sorry, Max, can you repeat the positive number for Waiala?
Waiala, we have, we don't have any, we're not reporting any active inmate positive, but we have four staff that are active.
I know it's been a, you're quoting current numbers at this particular point in time. When we look at the what the rest of the the state knows as the Omicron spike that we're going through, has it? Kind of mirrored what's happening in the community?
Yes, it's mirrored, and I think. What has, what is on our side is that we have not had any hospitalizations based on the current infection rate that we have right now.
Is the Department of Health still working with public safety and monitoring the COVID situation within the facilities?
Yes, we are working with Department of Health very closely. Recently, we've asked for assistance from the National Guard to do swabbing of inmates because we're doing massive testing. So our numbers are really high because we're doing a lot of testing. We're conducting several hundred tests per day for some of the facilities, and we're trying to detect as many inmates as possible that are infected. But, yeah, we're still taking consultation and advice from the Department of Health.
Are those daily tests in Rapid or the PRC?
I believe there are PRC. Yeah, they're all PRC. PCR.
PCR, sorry. And. Just a quick question on the, I understand that there were a lot of COVID funding and. Resources made available in order to manage and maintain. PPEs, yeah, in terms of masks and disinfectants and downs, et cetera, et cetera. Is that still being viable? Is that still being a viable resource for public safety?
Yes, we, we're still drawing down from my email. Whatever supply that they have, we're getting from them. But in addition, we're using better funding that we got purchased. We need, we need special, you know, like the gowns, we need special sizes for ACLs. They are not normally, you know, ordered to my email. So those we would have to purchase on my.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we, we, we do have whatever protective equipment available for both the staff and the populations available for them when need.
Yes, we do.
Is it adequate, Max?
It's adequate. Tommy's doing like at least a thirty days supply for each facility that they would have. Some of them have even more than thirty days.
I'm sorry.
We stopped shipping now. They have at least thirty days before we get them.
For changing masks, how often do inmates get to change their mask?
It means like give it cloth mask right now. They're given two, so they're required to.
The cloth mask is put in the laundry when they're getting the laundry done?
Yeah, we'll be washing on their own. If, if the mask gets lost, then that's for.
Max, I know when we, when you talk about staff with, that are positive or, or sick now, we or at least me, I often think about the correctional officers. But has there been any major impact on your medical staff throughout the facilities or your case management?
It definitely ACLs have been hit hard because we have the most ACLs. Medical staff, including doctors and nurses, have come down with COVID. So, you know, as far as staff shortage because of the infection, we experience it all around at this point. Even high-level administrators have come down with COVID.
Well, we hope the best and continue to monitor as you manage the situation as well as the rest of the state. Thank you, Max, for that report. Anything else you wanted to say at this time?
No, I, I think I'm, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item number four. And talk about, Ted, you, you want to talk about the letter, Martha?
Well, we, we posted the letter. Is Ted still there?
I'm here.
Yeah. We just put this, we put this on the agenda, the letter that we sent to the Finance and the WHAM committees in case we wanted any more discussions by the commissioners on our purpose and intent on the letter.
I believe the letter is, is self-explanatory. Ted did that analysis for us and it was very well, well argued, very, very well argued. And if we did not have Bob Mercer's report to start with, I mean, that certainly gave us a foundation to be able to, to print that. So I don't know whether we need to add anything to what we put in writing.
Well, ju- just, I just want to add that, you know, we did take up a position a year ago. And what we, in, in our last meeting, in our December meeting, we reiterated our position, we affirmed our position. Some of the other items that appeared in the letter were items that were discussed in our meeting in, in the, in, in the past year, such as the that I remember discussing the, the cost of the facility in terms of what the, what, what the lease payments are. What lease payments we can expect and how the state intends to pay for it. I remember discussing the Pulitzer Report, the O triple C forecast in which the, the consultant did say that if certain, certain reforms were implemented, the population will come down. So, so anyway, everything in the letter was publicly discussed. Just wanted to clarify that.
As we move forward, this is.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this testimony submitted by Mike Rice. And I think this emphasizes why we really need to get on a public education effort. Mr. Rice is disagreeing with the, the moratorium on the jail, saying that given how many people we now have at O triple C, we know we're gonna need that space. And he even goes too far to have a statement that says this isn't even to mention that how many are not being prosecuted for crimes they commit. And it would appear prosecutors are doing so in an attempt to alleviate overcrowding, which there's no foundation, there's nothing to support that statement. So we really need to make an effort this coming year to do like a Speaker's Bureau or something and start educating the public. We've talked about before.
Mark?
Yes, Mike?
I, I really support the letter that we sent out. I got calls from several legislators that were totally hadn't heard about what's going on with the idea of a new jail and how much it costs and, and that and I have a big, I told them I have a big problem with the word pause. Pause is different than a moratorium. So I, I think pub exactly what Martha's saying and I appreciate the letter and these legislators took the time to have their staff call me of all people and, and I, I referred them to this Zoom today and I talked to them. And if you need the names, I can give them to you, but they're very interested. Thank you.
What's important is that we, we, this is all discussions that we've had previously placed into a letter. And it also gives us the means to share that what we have done with the public, of course, but also as we move as the legislature opens the next week and in the next agenda items that we're gonna bring up, we want to have an understanding of what we're gonna support and what we're not gonna support. Yeah, so at least we have this letter prepared when, when it, when the issue begins to move toward, through the committees. Yeah, and others things that we may write in support of the letter as well as individuals and as the, as representing the commission. So a lot of work was done here. Thank you, Ted and Martha and Bob for providing foundation and continued discussion in the last year and a half on the subject.
Okay, Mark, can I just ask Max a question? Max, are you folks gonna stay around for the rest of the meeting?
If you want us to, we will.
Because we have on item number five is holdover and proposed legislation. I think that'd be the appropriate time if you want to discuss the separation of the Department of Law Enforcement from Corrections.
Sure.
Okay, no further discussion on item four, we can move to item five. And what we have here, and Carrie Anne, thank you. And then you folks, remember the last meeting, I did mention that we in last year's legislation, when, when we, when it opened and we began to process bills is when we found out there were a lot of bills out there regarding public safety. Yeah, and we felt our hands tied at the time. Not only did we not have staff, but we, we cannot really provide as a commission testimony unless we've discussed it in the public forum. Yeah, so last meeting, I, I called out to everyone to say, if you know of any bills that we can look at and, and and talk about so that we can have a, a, a means of support throughout the legislature as, as we discovered the bills. And we did have a few emails came our way. Thank you, Kat, for what you had to offer today. You may add that to the discussion as well, but Carrie Anne, you know, some of the stuff that you submitted to us, we were, had been in discussion with. So as I, as I talked to my commissioners, I believe what we want to do is are we, are we gonna support or are we not gonna support? Yeah, as we go down this list and then we can determine to have those discussions.
We can also support intent. Three hundred percent, but we can support intent and then discuss what our differences would be.
Let's, let's, let's go on a, 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 one by one. And then, you know, and I know we've been talking about the moratorium or the, or pause, but let's jump to another one to get our minds kind of clear. And so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna jump around on this on myself, but and I know you were involved in the clean slate.
Yes, but I'm ACLU has developed four bills and I think those are the ones, they don't have the completed bills yet. But I think those are, and that includes a clean slate, that those four bills, we should ask Carrie Anne to present on them.
Okay.
The moratorium, the no, the no bail. Ace bill? I don't know exactly what you have in here. Clean slate and ending incarceration protect and go and violate it. So if it's okay for Carrie Anne to present those?
Okay, let me ask one question. We've already had discussions a lot in the moratorium. Do we need to discuss that anymore? Are we all in favor and supporting it as, as written?
It's only summary, not as written. We don't have has written.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the letter that we submitted to WHAM and Finance.
Well, Mark, Mark, I think, I think Mike raised the point. He, he makes a distinction between a pause and a moratorium. And our position is a pause, not a moratorium. That, that's one point. The, the second point is that we're, we're talking concepts. I mean, we can talk intent. But I don't know if we should take a hard and fast position on anything unless, until we see the bill itself. And so you know, we, we, we got the thing from Carrie Anne. And that it really is more conceptual. Bob's, Bob's submission to us was, is, is an actual proposed bill. So it's easier to really make a decision on. What I'm suggesting is perhaps we might even consider a coming back together to look at specific bills shortly after the bill cutoff, the, the bill introduction cutoff.
And Ted, do you think that Ted, do you think the cutoff is going to be what, on the twenty-sixth, seven days after the ledge begins?
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't have the calendar.
I, 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 I don't think this, the, the calendar's been posted yet.
Yeah, but can I?
Carrie Anne is writing one twenty-six is the cutoff.
Okay, so is the twenty-seventh too early to meet again or maybe Friday, the twenty-eighth? Cause I agree with Ted, we need to see the content of the bills.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at my calendar.
And so other commissioners, we, we need you to pipe in about having a, a meeting in two weeks to discuss bills as they are introduced.
The twenty-sixth is a Wednesday, twenty-seventh Thursday, twenty-eighth of Friday. It would be a special meeting just to discuss the, the, the bills that we've identified. I think it's a great idea.
Yes, I think it's important we do that.
We need to consider the sunshine notice.
Yes.
Yes, which would be
Twenty-first?
Yeah, if we meet on the twenty-eighth, all we're saying was we're, on the twenty-first, we'll put out a correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, a, a special announcement to have a meeting on the twenty-eighth to discuss public safety regarding bills.
And that's if everybody can meet on the twenty-eighth. This is an important meeting, so I can do it.
I, I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay.
I'm okay.
So Mark, it's just you. Are you okay?
It's not like I want to say no right now. I don't have the choice, but no, no, it's, it's, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so Friday, the twenty-eighth at nine AM?
So do we need to get the bills from public safety and then post it for the twen- six days before the twenty-eight?
The reason Ryan, I'm suggesting we meet on Friday is the twenty-sixth is the deadline for introducing bills. So what we cut, we will have by the twenty-seventh, all the bill numbers. And we can then make sure that you get copies of all the bills as they were filed by the legislature.
They're, they're public information at that point, right, Martha?
Yeah, if they come out earlier, if some of these are introduced earlier before the twenty-sixth, we'll get them to you, Ryan. Is that okay?
Okay.
So my question is, do we, do we, not my question, but my suggestion is, do we, can we, should we just hold on the discussion to that time?
That's okay. How do others feel?
Well, I, I think, I think there's some some ideas in the submissions we've gotten so far that, that because it might already been submitting, submitted to us, I think it's, we can discuss it because some of them are, are, I think might take up a lot of time. So I'm okay with discussing what, what the ACLU and Mr. Mercer have, have submitted just as we, you know, but, but not make a final decision until we see the bill itself.
I was about to ask Carrie Anne to summarize those cases that, of those proposed bills that she sent to us. Martha? Carrie Anne, if you can, we just, you know, we, we appreciate the, you know, the, the well-written response that we had to our question in the last meeting in, in terms of any other supportive or any knowledge of bills that are being produced. And thank you and the ACLU for sharing that information with us. Can you, can you go over that summary that you sent us and then, I don't know if you guys want to have the ability to share that with others? You let me know.
Okay, so thank you very much. In terms of the clean slate, I just want to maybe before I even talk about the bills themselves, the legislator staff, Senator Chris Lee's office is working with us, has been working with us even before I came on board on the clean slate expungement and the technical violation bills. And they did share the latest update is that given the number of bills that are being pushed through, it, it could be closer to the deadline of the twenty-sixth versus nineteen, that the bills will be available. And we are working with Representative Sunny Gannon and his office to finalize the moratorium and the bill, bill. So on the clean slate, we are basically advocating for the strongest clean slate bill possible. ACLU is an affiliate of many other affiliates throughout the United States. And there are other states that have sort of paved the way, one of which is Connecticut. They recently enacted a clean slate bill. And essentially what the bill would do is that it would automatically expunge all arrest records for convictions after certain time period. All misdemeanor convictions are automatically expunged after five years during which time the individual has not had any subsequent convictions. Felony convictions automatically expunged after seven years, after which the individual has not had subsequent convictions. And that the bill would automatically expunge arrest records for non-convictions and still court records for both expunged convictions and non-convictions. Now, in terms of, this is sort of the ask from the ACLU, but as far as what is gonna actually be drafted, I understand that we all, we also need to review the bill very carefully, what's gonna be coming back. But we are taking a look at what Connecticut has done. And subsequent to this meeting, I can forward you the Connecticut legislation in case you'd like to look at that. For the second bill, the second bill ending incarceration.
Questions about that one? Ted, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, one, one question I had, Carrie Anne, regarding the expulsion was expulsion of felony seven, seven years from the date of conviction. What if, what if the offender is still serving time? Either is still on probation or still serving time in prison?
Yes, so I can just share with you, that has come up a few times and that's something that we're gonna be, again, there was another staff member who was working on this and we're waiting to see what comes back. But we believe what our understanding in Connecticut, it's not just from the actual date of conviction. I think it may be like after the person, if they are incarcerated after that time period, probably something very similar to HRS Chapter three seventy-eight, which is our essentially anti-discrimination laws for employment, that there is an ability to look back within a certain period of time after the person serves. But again, until the bill comes back, I'm not quite sure what the Senator's office actually put in there versus what the ask was. But I will send you what Connecticut has. And we are aware, Ted, that that is a concern. The first question that we usually get when we say this. Um, but I will send you what Connecticut has. And we are aware, Ted, that that is a concern. The first question that we usually get when we say this. So we're following up and we'll have more information with you on that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the clean slate before I move on to the next? So for the technical violations bill. Essentially with end incarceration for technical violations for probation and parole, where we understand that this would actually be turned into two bills for probation and parole separately. Um, the bill is proposed to end incarceration for technical violations of probation and parole. Um, that people accuse of committing a technical violation, that they be given a notice, uh, prior to a violation hearing. That they not be incarcerated while pending that they're hearing, that they remain into the community. Before the hearing occurs, so again, decarcerate. The bill is also suggesting and modeled after some other states prevent incarceration for maybe certain, we considered lower level offenses, misdemeanors. For example, maybe possession of drugs for personal use, other petty crimes. We're also requesting that conditions of probation and parole. Um, that they're reasonably related to the crime of conviction and they're tailored to the individual circumstances. In other words, that they be no more restrictive than necessary to ensure community safety and that the person can live safely in the community. And we requested that the bill prohibit restrictions on association. We believe that these conditions oftentimes disproportionately impact marginalized communities, native Hawaiian communities, Pacific Islanders, even African Americans. If you have a loved one who maybe also under probation or parole, just having an association. Restriction, we believe fundamentally interferes with liberty interests and we support removing that restriction. So I'll open that up for any questions.
I do have a comment, uh, about that. Um. I can't say that I'm in favor of a complete blanket that there'd be no taking back for these violations. Clearly, anything that's a status violation, that by the fact that they are on probation parole, it would not be, uh, something Martha can't do. It's only something that they can't do. I agree with those completely. Uh, I'm just not sure that a blanket, um. That you cannot take back is the, the best way to do it. So I would consider something like, if they do decide to take someone back, would have to be under certain circumstances. That would have to be explained in writing, so it's very clear as to why that decision was made to take them back.
Well, thank you. We, we appreciate the comments in advance. I know you'll still have a chance to deliberate once you have the bill, but it's important for us to hear what the concerns and questions may be from you as well as the larger community. Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, I, I have, I have a similar concern because I know that there are technical violations and then there are technical violations, you know, not every technical violation is the same. Um, so I, I would be, I, I agree with the broad concept, uh, but I. I would like to hear more about what are these technical violations for which, uh. Uh, probationers and parole leases being incarcerated. And, and also if there are technical violations for which they are not being incarcerated.
So, you know, in terms of this is, I think this is a challenge for all of us, right? Getting access to criminal justice data. Hopefully we can get more data from the Criminal Justice Research Institute, but. In terms of some of the data that we've looked at, it's both national, but also locally, we can look at HPAs. Why parole authority puts out their statistical report every year, so we can draw upon some of that. And this is just a quick snapshot and sort of our philosophy, why these bills are in the priority. We're looking at decarcerating, reducing the number of people in our jails and prisons from the front end of the system, so bail reform to the very end. And just looking at the numbers itself, I couldn't think. I tried to look at the judiciary to see how many persons are probation violations. There are some numbers, but in, I have right in front of me, so I don't want to misquote the numbers there. But in parole. In one year from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there were three hundred and ninety-four parole revocation hearings. Of those individuals, um, the total number who had probation, it says here. Revolt and it says revoke slash return to prison, three hundred and twenty-one. So three twenty-one. Out of three hundred and ninety-four had their parole revoked, returned to prison. It says basis for revocation, new felony conviction, zero. Technical violations of parole, three twenty-one. Now, I'm sure that there's probably additional data that HP has, maybe if there was a misdemeanor that could have been. But the way that the reports read, we can only draw upon what we have access to, but we believe that that number is stark. And then when we compare with the weekly population reports for public safety. Um, looking at Halawa at any given time, a snapshot, it says here that. This was on October nineteen, twenty twenty of last year, five hundred and forty-six individuals, males at Halawa were in for a parole violation. And so the numbers again are stark and we believe by doing these different strategies from the front end to the middle to the tail end. It will achieve one of the goals of the Oversight Commission too, which is to decrease the population and population management. And we welcome getting real data, um, from the commission or from our stakeholders.
Thank, thank you very much for that, Carrie Anne. What, as you were reciting some of the numbers that are available. Or, or what triggered in my mind is what's behind the data? You know, what else do we need to know? And this is a kind of information we would like to be able to, to analyze. Before, I, I think this, the, this system should analyze before determining what the size of a new, what triple C should be.
And, and we are in agreement that it's premature, um, to be proceeding to jail and that there should be more of a Guinness Systems Analysis overall.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Carrie Anne? Go ahead.
Are, are you done Ted? No.
I was, I, I was just going to ask, um. What, what, what impact would this bill have on programs in the judiciary such as drug court and hope probation?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I think we need to keep having more of these conversations, but again, if we were to look at the probation side, how many people probation are, are violating, that would decrease. The number of people who are inside and are sort of, overall framework is that if we decrease the number of people inside our jails and prison, which is the most costly response, right? To crime or a technical violation that we could use for a fractionable cost. Invested into treatment, behavioral health, other types of services, even housing, because we know housing is fundamental to people being successful in the community, like housing statements. Reentry support, diversion. Um, so I think again, we, if we start decreasing the population from the front end to the tail end. The cost we invested and reuse for divert and helping people to stay in the community and be successful. That is our overarching framework that we're looking at from the ACLU, because we believe that is also fundamentally fairness. Um, to keep people in the community and not just desperately impact certain groups, right, who may be poor, houseless because of their race. All of these confluence and versions of factors.
Thank you.
Carrie Anne?
Yeah, Ron.
Okay, this is Ron, Carrie Anne?
Yes, hi Judge.
Hi, uh, so what is the definition of technical violations and what are the other violations?
Sure, so I should, right now, I'm going to be pulling out over here. Um, so the technical violations is codified by statute and hopefully I can find it through all my, uh, pieces of paper here. Okay, so.
But.
I mean, I can, in terms of, I can give you examples of.
Yeah, one example is fine.
Okay, so it could be a technical violation, could be that somebody is, has not complied with their curfew. They're missing their appointment with the probation officer or parole officer. They're using alcohol or using drugs, um, which is a condition of maybe probation parole. It could also be associating, associating with somebody who has, who's also. Those are, those are just some, you know, examples, although the statute that we have does define, um, include. Technical violation and it's listed any conduct that violates a condition of community supervision. Other than commission of a new felony offense or a new misdemeanor offense under chapter one thirty-four. And again, it's harder for us to necessarily dig, drill down to some of the data as far as what may be possible misdemeanors, because we don't have access to that. But we would like to reach out and hear from the judiciary and from parole, maybe if they track that data and see if we could. Utilize it to make data-driven decisions. Overall. Did that answer your question, Judge?
Yeah, yes, uh, and yes, and, and I, I guess, uh, when we talk about association, there's certain, uh, depending on the crime. Uh, of course, it might not even be considered, for example, a sexual assault, uh, the tell the, uh, defendants stay away from where there's young kids, the schools. Theaters and things like that and don't associate. So, uh, it might be a technical violation, uh, uh, pertaining to different types of crimes, but maybe. You, you'll have to look at the circumstances itself, but yes, I, I, I agree with the, the concept of, uh, uh, of, of this proposal.
Yeah, and so Judge, we just want to respond to that. We understand that if there are conditions against that are reasonably related to the actual crime what somebody was charged with, so that instance, the examples you, you mentioned. For, as far as we know, some of the other states that have moved towards this, they would still allow for those kinds of circumstances, but just to have a blanket, you can't associate with someone. To get people, their own family, it could be sometimes people who are on probation get married. From that sort of, like you said, conceptual practice, we, we oppose the broad restriction without having it narrowly tailored.
Yeah, I agree. I think already we have a Supreme Court case that the conditions of probation has to re, be reasonably related to the crime for which the person is on probation.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Carrie Anne, I just want to make, this is kind of an aside almost, but one of the things that we don't pay much attention to, we pay a lot of attention to overcrowding in jails and prisons. But also probation and parole officers have overcrowded caseloads, which prevents them from doing effective casework. So I just want to always have that in people's minds, having adequate staff is very important for probation officers and parole officers to really do a good job. And they just don't have it right now.
You know, so Martha, I think that that raises an important question again, where the resources go. I mean, this is sort of, I can draw upon my old hat, right, working for Emilio Best Integration, where our case managers at the time, Emilio Best Reentry Program. Worked closely with the probation officers and parole and it really was a partnership. It was sort of an integrated case management approach. And in that case, we were able oftentimes, if parole or probation didn't have the funds to provide. Someone to get a substance abuse assessment or additional treatment. In, in those instances, Emilio Best would pay for those services. So I think again, this integrated holistic continuum of care is necessary. But if we putting all of our money into incarceration, we're not going to have the resources needed for the community-based services, which we know are proven to be more effective. And less costly. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I just want to point out that that model can exist and we should fund that because it, it's more effective.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Carrie, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Mike here, um, you've, you've heard my repeated, uh, sort of mantra. In Hawaii, we have overly felonyized conduct that in many states is either not criminal or is a misdemeanor. An example is Rob Two. A Rob Two is a B felony, ten years in prison. If, if, uh, a shoplifter puts a hand, just touches a, a, a security guard, that turns into a Rob Two. From a petty theft. And so I think we need to look, and you need to look hard at, at our overly felonyizing, the same thing with. Taking a pair of sunglasses out of a car with the window open, that turns into a felony rather than taking sunglasses. And I can go on and on. Um, the other thing is the concept of less drastic means. That's a constitutional co- um, concept that you, government should not interfere, uh, other than using the less drastic means. And, uh, are, and I was on the parole board for eight years, the parole officers, uh. Have a huge caseload, just what Martha's saying, and they need to think functionally and critically about whether they really want to revoke. Cause they'll, they'll go revoke somebody who would have been a misdemeanor. And it's a felony here and they go back into Halawa, it takes a month or two till we can hear their. Hear their revocation and that is gross overkill. And so I really, I support what you're re, uh, saying here, subject to hearing more information. Uh, uh, Fred is busy today. I did talk to Fred a little bit and Tommy's here, but, uh. We, we got to think functionally and minimally here and not, not, uh, lock everybody up. Cause it's very easy to sign the, the revocation and then they're in for a couple of months and they don't, when, particularly when they don't need to be there. Any comment to what I'm saying?
No, just that we, we agree and I, it's interesting that the New York, which has also sort of paved the way for this type of legislation, their legislation is called less is more. I think it goes back to sort of that harm reduction philosophy and see like what actually works and just longer sentences have been proven to be ineffective. In fact, they typically enhance criminality. And so we need it, what, what works to help people be successful in the community and enhance a community safety. And I would just mention. There is an appropriation bill, this is an aside, but there is discussion for appropriation bills to increase capacity and funding for reentry. And diversion type services in the community. I understand that that may be coming out this session, that may be something the Oversight Commission may be interested in. Um, because again, the parole officers have a high caseload, but what about diverting some of the funds into the community and have other nonprofits? Hope going home on Hawaii Island here on Oahu, because it, it is a really truly, I feel like an integrated model and it's a win-win because it's less costly, it frees up caseloads for parole probation. And it's an integrated model that is really effective and I, I think also culturally based. You have the entire community invested in helping people to be successful, um, not only for themselves, but for their family and our entire community. Okay, so I'm going to.
Excuse me, Carrie Anne, I, I, I do have another question on that, on, on that proposal. At, at the very end, you talk about good time credits, a good time credit system. Can you explain what, what you're proposing here?
Okay, and again, that is something that is proposed. We don't know if it's going to actually make the bill itself, but, um, in some of these other jurisdictions, they've sort of coupled this. Ending incarceration for technical violations, but providing a positive incentive, so an incentive-based program to do well. So for example. If you, um, don't have any violations for, you know, a period of time during your sentence, then that may shave off time from the back end of your sentence. So it's. It's the opposite, right? Instead of using the hammer, when you do something wrong or make a mistake, it's if you're doing well, you actually are quote, have an incentive to keep doing good. Um, and how it's been done, bless you, in some other states, and that is, let's see if I can. Again, that is the less is more. And it says, so for example, in New York. Most people in parole would be eligible to earn a thirty-day earned time credits reduction in their community supervision period for every thirty-day period in, in which they do not violate a condition of supervision. And that is something that is in New York. It's called less is more. We are looking at, we're not sure if. Again, we made the request, we're not sure if they were actually going to include this in this bill. They might only maybe focus on the technical violation aspect and then the incarceration. But this was our ask to couple the two together. I mean, that's our wish list ultimately.
But my understanding is that there already are mechanisms to get your probation or parole term reduced. So, um, but, but it requires a formal process which could take time. So what you're, uh, is what you're proposing simply a way to ca- codify it? So that, uh, so that you don't have to have a formal hearing, you don't have to go before the judge to get your, your probation reduced from five years to three years, for example.
Right, I do think it is more of like streamlining processes and having it automatic versus discretionary. Um, I think that's something to be said, because even like under parole authority, they have the authority to reduce a minimum sentence, but a person has to first of all apply for that, there's a hearing. And if you look at the statistical numbers, the number of reductions are, are small. Um, there's also an opportunity, if someone has a long-term sentence, the parole authority has the ability. To quote, quote, um, sort of end their sentence early on, right, the sort of end out if they're doing well. But again, if you look at the statistics and again, the statistics we have are limited, that's a very small proportion of individuals. That occurs for. So again, if we are looking at decreasing the population, not having mass overcrowding, then all of these tools should be at our disposal and it makes it. More automatic. Um, and I think it's true, it's, it's interesting because I think we always think, well, adults. Um, you know, the hammer works, but the hammer we're showing through evidence doesn't work. In fact, it's usually people who are inside who have had the hammer their entire lives. And that's not effective. And so if we do positive base reinforcement, um, cognitive behavioral changing. Behavior, rewarding people, incentivizing good works. Um, and I know from experience at Emilio Best, that's what we attempted to do. And I believe that that is success, successful. It is, it's a successful model that we can basically scale up statewide.
Thank you.
I agree with what Carrie Anne is saying. My, my research is now old. I haven't done research in a long time. But I know that people who are continued on parole and probation when they are doing very well. But they are not being released and they still have restrictions. There's a frustration that sets in with that. but they are not being released and they still have restrictions, there's a frustration that sets in with that. And if it was predictable by statute that for every thirty days of being clean, you get a thirty day reduction, people know what they're working towards and it makes it much better for them.
Yes. And again, that would, that would reduce the caseloads for parole and probation officers as well. It would make it more, what I, there's, there's best practices for what the caseload should be for probation, parole, for counselors in schools. And when we exceed that, again, it's a disservice to the staff, but it's also a disservice to the individuals in our community. So we believe that in sort of the big picture that we hope that you will support that bill. Um, on the criminal pre-trial bail reform. So we, I just want to be candid. We understand that there is a bail bill from last year that essentially is being resurrected. And it would lead to more, I would believe, conservative, moderate releases from pre-trial. And while we still want to reduce the population overall, we propose a, I would say more progressive, more far-reaching bill. And, and more in alignment with what the federal government uses. So the federal government, as you know, uses unsecured bail. The bill would allow for, starting off with a rebuttable presumption that every person charged is entitled to unconditional release. So we're starting with that and that the government has the burden of proof under clear and convincing evidence. If that person poses a flight risk, a serious flight risk, or and or the person poses a serious risk, a danger to other, another specific person or persons. Having the hearing within forty-eight hours of the person's arrest, also requiring the courts um, to have finds that unconditional release and bail is recommended by the state. Non-financial alternatives to bail must be considered before imposing money bail. Again, this is done essentially the federal court and federal court has been doing this for decades already. The bill would allow the bail may be denied again if it's a serious crime and there's the flight risk or obstruction of justice. I also forgot to mention that one, significant danger to another person. And that there is no condition or conditions that would reasonably assure that appearance of the person. Um, and then in that situation, bail could be denied. So ACLU, as you know, some municipal issued a report using data specifically to Hawaii. And as you know, approximately fifty percent of the people who are inside of our jails statewide are there because of pre-trial detention. They're essentially people who are living in poverty, disparately Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, African Americans. And we believe that the size of your wallet should not dictate your, whether you're going to be released or not into the community. And this is a proven strategy nationally, other states, um, in particular, New Jersey has led the way.
If you read the Humphries decision, seven zero out of California.
No, I have not, Judge.
When if ever does seven justices agree on anything? Basically, there's no cash bail in California with some exceptions. And, and I really recommend that we cite that in our footnotes today, Henry Humphries. Bob's not here. I think Bob did another meeting, but um, it, I, I guess the longer I'm here, the more I'm just completely against any cash bail. I know that's unpopular. I know that it gets in the way of my friends in the bail bond industry. But uh, that's, that, that's probably going to be my position unless I see some evidence otherwise. Cause the judges have to use discretion and they don't do it. And then they set bail, bail, as you say, impacts uh, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, African Americans, poor people, mentally ill people. Subject to exceptions. Thank you.
And Judge, I just want to add, I mean, these are not radical recommendations. It's really coming out of data that's out there in the universe, uh, Prison Policy Initiative, a number of think tanks, Vera Institute. But also if we just take a look at the pre-trial task force report recommendations, also HCR eighty-five. But going back to the pre-trial task force, one of the recommendations is unsecured bail, right? That is specifically listed in the report. It's codified by law and I can share this with you because the Maui Reentry Fui has been meeting for the last maybe almost two years. And it was shared at a recent meeting that on Maui, just by stakeholders coming together, that the prosecutor's office, the public defender's office and the judiciary judge Beeson, who is retiring or just retired, by consensus decided that they wanted to initiate a pilot utilizing unsecured bail. Um, this is last year. So they drafted a form by consensus and what I understand is that they sent it up. I'm not sure who they sent it up to within judiciary, but they said that they never received a response and so they did never move forward. And so again, we have certain tools and for various reasons, it's not being utilized. And I think that if we change the standard and have it more along the lines of New Jersey, some of these other states, it's going to take a systems change, but it's going to be worth it. New Jersey did decrease their jail population between thirty-five and forty percent. And it did not decrease the number of people showing up for courts. And it also did not re- result in it, in this so-called fear that all these people are going to be committing crimes. The data did not support that.
Thank you.
Carrie Anne, one more thing. You know who Rachel Rollins is? The US Attorney for, for Boston, Massachusetts. But she's, she's what they call a progressive prosecutor. It's not a Nazi moron. And, and we've got a bunch of them across the country. I encourage people to research what a progressive prosecutor does. Most of them are against cash bail and Rachel's the US Attorney. Uh, she's a prosecutor and um, she's under a certain amount of, of attack now. But I really recommend people to learn about progressive prosecutors. And I've shown a lot of this to Judge Alm. I, I don't know where he categorizes himself.
If there are not further questions about the bail reform, I'll jump to the.
Hi Carrie Anne. Yeah, I, I'm in favor of uh, getting rid of no cash bill for certain crimes. But have you folks looked at uh, uh, last year's Senate Bill twelve sixty, S D one and H D one? You know, they had some favorable comments by the legislators. And rather than reinvent the wheel and start all over, uh, you know, I would suggest that you look at that and, and, and move forward with that. Because I, I, at least the legislators discussed that bill. And certainly uh, there are some good points made and, and, and other points that needed to be streamlined. And but yes, I did testify on last year's uh, twelve sixty and Senate Bill one, Senate Draft one.
Yeah. So we can share with you Judge Abara that that bill is the one essentially is being resurrected. They made a few changes to it. So we did take a look at that and we carefully reviewed it. But we also worked on drafting another bill and again, it's going to be finalized. So we don't know exactly what's going to be put in there. But we would encourage the commission, if you're looking at both in tandem, um, ultimately supporting bill reform, we'd actually recommend that the board or the commission adopt the one that we are pushing for. And the reason is that, again, there is, there are models out there. And I think New Jersey is probably the furthest ahead. They've had bail reform for about five years now. They've been tracking consistently the data. The data is very clear. They have gone with a model that's more in line with the federal government, so to speak. And they are able to hold people if they believe that they pose a danger or serious flight risks. But otherwise, a presumption is to release. And the reason we ask is that if we are looking to reduce the population significantly, a substantial outcome, the other proposed measure that's out there that will be resurrected, we believe will decrease the number of people, but not to the point of getting the jails below um, operational slash design capacity. So ultimately, we're looking at impact. What would be the greatest impact? And then using that money to invest in what, what works. So just a sort of our framework of how we're approaching this, um, and as you consider both bills side by side.
Okay. And I'm sure you folks considered uh, which bill was more likely can be passed.
Yes, Judge, there is almost that, but I also like to believe, I mean, I, I know it's not a perfect analogy. And it's, it's not by any means, um, but I also think so, like, you know, there's a certain philosophy, right? Which we push, try to advocate. And I think from a position, we want to advocate for what we believe will be truly the best for entire community from a certain framework. And it's sort of like at the time of slavery and abolition, some people were pushing for, you know, incremental releases and some people were pushing for just outright abolition. And we are essentially seeing that, looking at bail reform and that the unfair impacts, it really is an issue of fundamental fairness. Um, and I think what's really interesting is that in New Jersey, the Chief Justice Stuart Rabner actually really paved the way to push for bail reform. It was from the judiciary. And I'm hopeful that at some point, we will have that strong support. Um, and with your also support at the legislature, I think it would make a difference. If, if the Oversight Commission, who is tasked with population management, were to say, we support this particular measure, we, we support all in concept, but we support this particular bill because it would have the greatest impact. I think that that would be really important for them to hear. Because you, all of you have expertise in many, many years in this area and they are looking to you for your guidance and support. That's my plug, Judge. Okay. And then the last, but not the least is the moratorium on the jails and prisons. And I just want to say that the ACLU will also be submitting testimony in support of other measures, but these are our top four. Because again, we were looking at collective impact and our concern is that if the jail were to be built, once it's built, basically, once they start construction, if you build it, it will fill. And so this was sort of a timeliness issue. The time is of the essence. We are proposing a moratorium, not a pause. We are actually asking for a moratorium. It's modeled after a bill that is in Massachusetts, um, a moratorium. It essentially says to stop not just the construction, which was last year's language. It says to stop the planning until you have essentially further discussion, systems approach thinking and the input of the Oversight Commission. And I did put this in the chat box. I'm not sure if any of you know this, but through our own sort of research about moratoriums and jail planning, we noticed and came across, there is a jail planning sort of guide from the National Institute of Corrections. And that they provide technical assistance to jurisdictions that are potentially looking to build jails and giving feedback and they, they advocate for a systems approach. Um, and so again, I think that that's in alignment with what the commission is asking for, whether you support the pause or the moratorium. We're ultimately looking to stop this building of this particular jail at this point in time. Because we know that alternatives can reduce the population. And it's going to save us money that we can reinvest back into the community. And we are proposing the moratorium that it would be for a, a, a five year. And last year, as you know, I think it was unlimited timeframe. And then it, I, I think the next amendment whittled it down, but we are starting off with a request for five years.
Carrie Anne, as um, what, what some of the previous discussion triggered, uh, the, the discussion on the previous, previous bills, for example, the cash bail and the technical violations. What triggered in my mind was how many, how many offenders are we talking about? The, this is the kind of information I think we need before we can decide, okay, this is, this is the uh, number of beds we need in the new facility. So I think this, it's a, we need to have a much more robust discussion uh, with, with actual numbers. I don't know if Mark's still there or if Martha, are you still running the meeting?
I'm still running the meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Well, you know, we, we had talked previously about the uh, research arm of the judiciary that was also set up, it was set up uh, as part of Act one seven nine. And I think we really need to, to um, make formal overtures and, and get and work in closer partnership with them. So, because I think this is exactly the kind of uh, things that they ought to be looking at. If this bill passes, this is the impact.
Yes, what, um, Ted, I just want to add that in the preamble, the draft, again, the draft preamble to this proposed moratorium, we cited the fact that there should be a systems approach. We cited this National Institute of Corrections, even their guidance to the systems approach, um, to quote planning. We cited the Oversight Commission and we also made reference to the Criminal Justice Research Institute. We believe that it is premature to go ahead without having all of the data um, from the judiciary throughout the entire system. And that entity was created for this specific reason. And we believe that again, you cannot move forward until you get accurate data. Um, the other thing I would like to point out is that I just sort of made my own mental list of reports over the years. And we are making a request to the commission, but what we are asking for and what we are proposing at the legislature are really recommendations that have come out of decades of reports. So HCR eighty-five, the pre-trial task force, justice reinvestment, council state governments. All has desperate impact on Native Hawaiians report, Native Hawaiian Criminal Justice Task Force. Some of PSD's own reports, making reference to needing, you know, resources, reentry, other things. Um, the master plan for corrections. In nineteen ninety-four, Alu Vike commissioned the report and talked about disparities in the criminal both jails and prisons and recommendations to decrease that. And, and that's just a smidgen of the reports that are out there. Not to mention all of the national reports and prison policy initiative, Vera, Q Research. There's just a plethora of resp- reports, recommendations. And so I think we're at the convergence of this place now that we have CJR. We have the Oversight Commission. We have so many stakeholders, the community is asking for more accountability. Um, and looking at alternatives, I believe now is the time. I believe that the momentum is with us to do something fundamentally different and to really chart a course for corrections in Hawaii and our criminal legal system that will benefit the community ultimately.
I just want to toss another bit of information in, uh, because I think we um, anyway, there, there's this new dormitory that's being constructed right now at the, the Women's Community Correctional Center in Kailua. And it's going to add a hundred seventy-six beds to the W, W triple C. The capacity at W triple C is two hundred and sixty. So with the addition of the hundred seventy-six beds, the capacity will be four hundred thirty-six. On December thirty-one, the total number of women incarcerated on Oahu was three hundred and eight. Now, to support the um, the, the, the new building, the department's budget request is for about a hundred new positions, permanent positions. So I think, I think this should give us all some food for thought.
Thank you so much, Ted, because I, again, the moratorium that we're proposing is broader in, in concept and principle. We are actually asking not just for this moratorium for the, for all triple C, but even for the expansion. It calls for not just the new construction, but also expansion until the systems approach is, is completed. And I think this is a, should be of importance to the Oversight Commission. My understanding is that in the years past, it was previously TJ Mahoney's and now it's under Y W C A. There have been more capacity in the community to serve women, in particular, gender responsive programming, community-based beds. And that they are not at full capacity. They could serve more women. And so why would we put the money into PSD's budget to build a bigger expanded women's correctional center? If we could serve them successfully in the community? Again, through these partnerships and a continuum of care. So I just, it just concerns us. Again, where we're placing our money in terms of outcome and impacts. And I would also like to highlight in both PSD's, you know, literature here, like the replacement of the correctional center, these were all done, prepared by ER um, in conjunction with DAGS. If you look at the alternatives, they keep listing that there is a no action alternative. And that it would just maintain the status quo and preclude the opportunity to develop and, and operate a new state-of-the-art replacement facility. But we're saying that this is backwards, right? We need to invest in the incarceration, reducing the population through proven strategies, which is not a no action. Cause we're not calling for the status quo. We're calling for changes in policies, strategies that are proven by data to decrease the population, save money and enhance um, community safety. So again, I think that even these reports are flawed because there is no, there are alternatives that can be done. It's not an, it's not a no action.
Hey, thank you. I'm sorry, Carrie Anne. Uh, Mark, just let me know that he is back at the meeting now. Mark? Or maybe he took a little break.
I think I see him.
I'm sorry. The completion of the, what you sent us, yeah, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
He covered everything.
Thank you. That was really good um, information for all of us to, to listen to and see where we are. And I, and I really honestly believe it's really um, important that we look at what are the alternatives. Yeah. And make a presentation and make a push to the legislature that this is the alternative to what you're trying to accomplish here.
I'm going to, to say something as a former correctional worker that worked for years on developing reports, sitting on commissions for alternatives. It is so frustrating in Hawaii and my biggest frustration has always been with the legislature. They just don't buy into this stuff. The juvenile, I mean, the juvenile, the uh, Justice Reinvestment Initiative went very far in trying to make recommendations for change. And we, we submitted omnibus uh, legislation under the Abercrombie administration to do that. Hardly anything passed the Hawaii State Legislature. Those are the ones that really need to be educated and their staff. I'll get off my soapbox now.
Yeah. Martha, if I could just share with you that we are going to be, you know, now that the ACLU has. The ACLU has a smart justice field organizing team, there is going to be more concerted efforts to do more community outreach and public education. Because you're exactly right, I think that it's all branches of government need to work together along with the community in order to reduce the population. And the legislature for not all, but some of them will buy into myths about criminal justice or the worst case scenarios. And then create public policies around the worst case scenario rather than looking at the evidence. And so we'll do our part to educate them, but I'm sure hearing from the Oversight Commission, maybe working all together collectively, we can have collective change.
Thank you. We did, I did ask PSD to stick around so they can just quickly discuss splitting PSD into two departments. And I know that most of the emphasis I saw on the newspaper was about the need for law enforcement to have more of an independent way to speak. But I really want to know the impact on corrections, how would it affect corrections, which I hope is positive.
Thank you, Max.
Yeah, we are planning to introduce a state proposal this year to basically split the department into two. And we're going to create, asking to create a new department. Department of Law Enforcement. And have their own separate director. That would validate all the law enforcement functions within the current public safety. As well as AG's investigations and public patrol. On the correction side, which people are interested in, is that the department will be renamed from the Department of Public Safety. Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. In replacing the department's deputy director for law enforcement. It will be the deputy director for rehabilitation. And there's going to be a deputy director of corrections. So basically, you have one deputy that will be responsible for maintenance and security of facilities. And you would have another deputy that will focus on services, treatments and programs for inmate, the inmate population. I think this is kind of in line with Act one seven nine. You know, we. It would ask, you know, we, the bill was submitted to the governor's office, the draft, the final draft of the bill was split the governor's office yesterday. But in, given the opportunity to review the bill, we would ask the commission for their support. I I think this is the right movement that we're moving, the direction that we're moving. Mainly as director of this department, it is difficult to maintain corrections and law enforcement. Because it's two separate entities, people think it's, you know, similar, but it is. Ted, you could probably attest to this, it's, it's two different. It's two different shops that do things completely different. So I, I think that if we can split and focus, you know, on what the primary missions are for each department. I think we'll probably get better results.
Tommy, Tommy, is there something to say?
You know, just that by splitting the, by adding a second deputy director for program rehabilitation. We able to do a paradigm shift so that we can focus on better outcome assessments, the treatment, the programs. And including reentry. As Max indicated, this does follow along with Act one seventy nine. And I think we will get a better department for it that's more rehabilitative instead of punitive.
Max, I'm just curious, was there any discussion among different departments about doing this? Because in the past, when they first created Corrections, Department of Corrections, and then there was discussion about bringing in law enforcement. One concern was that there is a maximum number of departments allowed by the state constitution.
Yeah, but we're, we're below this, so you know, there's, there's room to create another department. All the departments that affected have been consulted. In fact, they participated in drafting the bill. AG's Investigations, you know, are on board. We have not included dog care. Dog care would be. Land natural resources would be the next law enforcement agency. But they expressed that their, their mission is a little bit different, they're more stewards of the land and educators first in law enforcement. So we have not included that in this bill.
Also, Martha, with the creation of the new department, that still leaves one under the constitution that could still be created down the line. It doesn't max the state out.
Okay, because when we created Corrections, Corrections was like the eighteenth out of nineteen possible departments. So maybe the constitution thing?
There's still one more, so I don't know, I'm with numbers, but that was one of the things that the AG's office looked at. The governor's office was concerned with, they still have one more slot available.
Thank you.
Martha, I have a question. Max or Tommy, parole would stay with Corrections then, is that my understanding?
Yes, the administrative attached agencies would remain with Corrections.
Good, good, I like this.
It's, it's an interesting development and we, we should be monitoring how that bill moves forward. And hopefully on the twenty ninth, we can talk more about it, you know, just for historical purposes. When I was hired at Halava a long time ago, we were still part of the Department of Social Service and Housing. You know, all the prisons were, were a division of Corrections under DSSH. When we opened the doors at Halava, it was open under the Department of Corrections. And then, which moved from DSSH, but they left the, the youth facility behind. And I think within a year we became Public Safety after that.
Didn't leave the youth facility behind, they had another effort going on to decide what to do with the youth facilities. It was still part of us until nineteen ninety one, the Office of Youth Services was created in eighty nine. For three glorious years with the Department of Corrections.
Yeah, the, the whole thought was to move the children away from the adults. Yeah, and and go on another path with that. So that, that's, that's kind of historical, how a state has managed department level changes. To try to make systems, system changes. So it sounds like a, a good plan, Max, and we, we want to review the actual bill itself. And so thank you for that presentation. That was a lot of information, everybody, and that's something for us to think about as we. I'm glad that we were able to put together that meeting on the twenty ninth.
It's the twenty eighth, I think.
The twenty eighth, so that we can make some decision and see what other bills, see what other bills pop up. So thank you, Carrie Anne and Bob, for, for supporting us. In, in, in our, in our quest to look for information and what's out there in the legislature and Kat, you as well.
Mark, I have a question for Max, if he's still there. Max, is, is the bill going to be introduced as part of the administration package?
Yes, that's the plan.
Could you forward us a, a earlier copy so we can start reviewing it then?
Once the governor decides that.
It is part of the package.
Yeah, once it becomes part of.
Okay, okay.
Not official yet, as I say, we just submitted the final draft yesterday, like half an hour before the deadline. So I don't think the governor himself has.
Okay, well, well, thank you, because I, I think there's, there's a lot to chew on. And I'm, it's, it, it's good to hear. How you folks are really trying to think about how to make the department responsive to some of the. The Act one seventy nine. Philosophy, so thank you.
Ted, I'm going to ask you to hold on to that question, I really want to get the next discussion over with.
I'm done.
I know, I'm talking, I seen some people raising their hands. And I mean, let's go to the remaining items and then we'll do public comments right after that. But you know, this is a good, the next item on the agenda is really the, the annual report to the legislature. And I really wanted to, the fellow commissioners, that, you know, we have, we should be submitting something. I need to get some input from you on, on, on. After this particular previous agenda item, you know, how, what is the flavor of our report? Last year, we were very lucky to have. A lot of information provided by the community that we utilize and then we summarize things. And it was really a great report for our first year of work. And so we, we probably didn't work as much in letter writings and communication as we did that, that previous year. But I think one of the things that we can consider is utilizing this report in terms of what the discussions we just had. So I'm hoping for comments at this time.
I think it's going to be more difficult this year to do, to review everything we did in the course of a year. Because I don't think we accomplished as much. And part of that, I'm, I'm looking at the email we received from Jasmine Jackson Richmond. And she sent an email to us in October about lack of medical care attention to inmates at Tuaro. And then she resent it just now or on the tenth, because we didn't respond to that. And that's been a real problem for us. When we had that period of time when we were suspended from the, having to do everything in the open, the access law. We were able to look at these letters, discuss them, come up with a consensus of how we're responding without doing seven day notice. And so we've been really lacking on being able to respond to that, which is a big disappointment. What we do have, most importantly, I think, is our, the request for the. Pause in the development of the new facility. And the other thing is the legislation we've been discussing. I see those, those are things that'd be easy to cover in an annual report.
We have to send another list of names to the governor.
Yes, it's another thing. We're just really weak on responding to complaints.
Well, that's why we're supposed to have staff.
Exactly, yeah. And I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, and following up, we need the staff to conduct the investigations raised by these letters. All our responses have been is, well, you know, let's get input from whoever, public safety or things like that. But frankly, you know, I think all along that our mission is really to go in independently. And follow up on these inquiries raised by the complainants. I suppose, Mark, one area is, I guess we can, we can list all the letters that we've been receiving for the year. And what we've done with those letters.
Yeah, because we can investigate, yeah.
I guess to show the importance of staff to follow up on these letters.
Yes.
Okay, we just look at the mandate of, of Act one seventy nine. And it's just me as a chair trying to figure out an outline and how we express everything that we're talking about right now. Is really being able to articulate the, the, the top three issues on Act one seventy nine that talks about investigations. We can report out on what, what our ability has been and why it's been that way or inability. Two is really look at population control. Yeah, and give some comments and, and about how we feel that is being handled throughout the department at this particular time. And really look at whatever work we can say that we've assisted or articulated concerning punitive to transformative system. Yeah, if we just start from there and then take a look at what we, what we feel that we've had discussions or completed. We can, we can put something together. Attached to all of that will be some of our thoughts on the, on the legislation coming up.
The moratorium letter, or not moratorium, the pause letter, that's very.
So all, all the discussions that we have can be put into these three areas. And that'll give me a, a manner by which I can follow in order to put it together with your folks' help as well. Yeah, it's also need the pen and, and the mindset, and I'll, I'll be reaching out to you folks.
Well, can I propose, Mark, that. I'm willing to come over to your office and you and I can come up with an outline. If this is okay with everybody else, come up with an outline what we want to discuss. Send that out to the commissioners via email for their comments and review. And get that back and then we can start asking when we need other people to contribute. You know, when we need the members of our commission to contribute to actually writing the aspects of that report. But how, is there a chance on Monday that maybe you and I could meet?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay, so we can, if that's okay with everybody else, we have something substantive, an outline written down that you all can respond to?
I'm okay.
Okay, so we'll do that and we'll get something to you by Monday afternoon. And then we're going to ask everybody contributor, you know, among the five of us, everybody take a little piece of it and contribute to putting this together, okay?
I just wanted to share with you that Monday's a holiday.
So you, you can, you can work, Martha, but Mark's not going to be there.
But it's okay, Martha, we'll, we'll discuss the time, yeah.
Well, I have to look at my calendar, but you know, I could also come out tomorrow. Would that be better if I came out tomorrow because of the holiday?
Let's go alternative Saturday or, or Monday, I'm good, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you, I'll discuss when, okay.
I may have to talk to my real boss this way.
Yeah. I don't think it's going to take us that long. In an hour and a half, we'll be done with something substantive to pass out to everybody, okay?
Thank you for that discussion. And then along the same lines, just real quick, any concerns about me going to the legislative? I mean, I'm sorry, the neighborhood board from the commissioners, Mike?
No, you have an encouragement.
Ronald? Ted?
No, but, but Mark, is that the in-person meeting or is that through electronic?
I believe it's a Zoom, I can send that out to you folks.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, I've, I've no concerns with you representing us.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm going to take Martha's advice and talk, and talk about the letter that we sent to the finance and WAM committees. And stick us closely to the mandates of the Act one seventy nine. Okay, thank you so much for that. We're at ten forty seven at this time. Kat, you want to address what you wanted to ask?
Yes, I just wanted to say how important it was, it is to pass the reform, the fix on Act one seventy nine. Because the current bill says people should be released at their maximum and that was a mistake, so it needs to be minimum. And the second thing about the Family Visitation and Resource Center, this is really important. Because the EIS said there will be no more contact visits, only video visits. And it was that little paragraph was buried deep in the appendices. So they were really trying to sneak that in and say any in-person visits would only be with attorneys. That does not keep people connected and this bill is really important, thank you.
Thank you, Kat, for reminding me about that, I did get that email. And I believe the commissioners are aware of those too.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Carrie Anne?
I just want to briefly add with some conversations with some legislators relating to the moratorium. They did ask the question, what is happening with the Oversight Coordinator for the Oversight Commission? And several of them were expressing surprise and dismay that the governor has still not appointed. Something for the commission to think about, this is more of like a structural issue. Maybe considering modifying the statute so that the governor has X amount of time to make a selection. And that if he does not do so or she in the future, the governor could change. That then that maybe goes back to the commission to make the ultimate decision. Because it's just concerning, I'm not aware of any other commission, including the CJRI. That was created by the Pretrial Task Force where the governor did not, someone wasn't hired in terms of the section. And it is impacting your work, which mean it impacts the community members that are coming forward and asking for investigations. And the way that the statute is ruled, the coordinator would ultimately help to lead that. So it is this sort of vacuum that all of you are in. And I'm just concerned that without the legislators being aware of what's truly happening. There may be another year or even longer before a selection is needed. We want to consider a legislative solution, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, for that thought, that's a good point.
And you know, the reason the. And you know, the reason the legis, I mean, the judiciary was able to hire someone is their budget is not connected to the executive branch. Only the CJ had to approve it.
I'm looking for visible hands or digital hands, if anybody else on our community wants to make any more comments to the discussions we had today. If not, a lot has been discussed.
Mark, Mark?
Go ahead, Ron.
Uh, just to clarify, so are we on for the twenty-eight, nine uh nine o'clock meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and and then um. Bear with me. February seventeenth, Lisa would be the next one.
Regular meeting, yeah.
Regular meeting, yes. I don't know if she's still on, but I'm I'll I'll. Okay, thank you, February seventeenth at nine o'clock AM. Appreciate everybody who's been here, commissioners, thank you for uh being on this, our meeting today. We'll see you in a couple weeks to discuss the legislative bills. Thank you for the community to be here and your support and helping us in uh, when we have no staff, at least we have community. So I appreciate you folks and uh wish everybody a happy new year until we meet again, aloha.
Thank you.
Hello, happy new year, everyone.
Happy new year.
Bye-bye.
Bye.